Welcome. Very good. I'd like to call the January 3, 2022, Davie County Commissioners Meeting to order. I'd ask Commissioner Jones to lead us in the invocation, please.
Let us pray. Father, we come before you tonight, Father, with thanks in our heart. Lord, we thank you for placing us in this freest of all lands. We thank you for men and women that have served on battlefields and sacrificed the ultimate sacrifice that we might be free tonight. We thank you for men and women that serve in our law enforcement, our fire departments, our EMS, our schools, Father, that our communities might be a great place to raise a family and our streets might be safe. And so, Lord, tonight, in this first meeting of the new year, we seek wisdom, we seek discernment, we seek vision and mission and purpose that can only come from you. So, Lord, tonight, thank you for the leadership of this great county. Thank you for the families that make up this great county. And, Father, in may all things, may we give you praise, glory, and honor. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Could all stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next, we'll do the ethics and conflicts disclosure. Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes 168-86 and Davie County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics adopted December the 2nd, 2019, I'd ask each of you, before you adopt the agenda, if there's any actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest with respect to any matter on the proposed agenda which might come to you before the board tonight for a vote. If so, please speak up and let this time, let me know. Seeing no one speak up, I conclude there's no actual potential or perceived conflicts of interest by any board member.
Look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second on the floor. All in favor? By vote. Thank you. All right, next, we go to public comment period. Mr. Vogler.
We've got three individuals who signed up tonight. First is Wade Leonard on a zoning issue. Wade, if you would come to the podium, state your full name so that it will be recorded.
Yes.
And then you have three minutes in which to speak. I will be timing you and be holding up cards.
Long-winded lawyer, you going to keep me to that?
Unfortunately.
Anyway, Wade Leonard, this is Mr. Tim Cranfield. Very briefly, I know we're kind of on a stop thing or other, but I'll try not to go too fast, but I'll try to speak fairly legibly, clearly. This is about a zoning issue Mr. Cranfield has with the zoning board. Mr. Cranfield, as I understand, he can elaborate a wee bit later on, might want to show you some pictures if you allow him to do so. He bought some property, an acre and a half thereabouts, back in October of 2000, had four or five lots on it. He's developer, he's a contractor, he's a whatever it is he does, he makes things better. He remodeled some mobile homes, brought some mobile homes in. These were 14 by 70s. He brought in some 14 by 80s, I think, updated them, newer ones, graded, planted, all this here and there. He went to get his permit in June of this year for all these mobile homes. Zoning board said you can have three, but you can't have four. He says, why not? His answer was somebody, somewhere, sometime made it a decision that fourth lot was abandoned. He knows nothing about it, he tells me. Nobody told him anything, nobody notified him anything. He couldn't come in and explain his situation. Bingo. You're just out of luck, SOL. It doesn't exist anymore. It's got a street address, I understand it, it's got a postal address. You know, it's his. He bought it, he paid for it, he worked it, it's ready to go. Two minutes. Thank you, sir. So, anyway, if we go with the county and do not allow him to have this permit, as I look at it, the county loses. We lose a family, we lose folks that may go to Skittle here, may go to church here, may grocery shop here, may gas shop here, go to restaurants, they pay taxes, they vote, we lose that. If the county prevails, all we've got is an empty lot, a hole in the ground. If he is allowed to continue, from what I understand, has been the last 50 years or so, this is a mobile home, it's all mobile homes and houses, this thing and the other up and down Gladstone Road, everybody's happy. You know how hard it is to get rental in Davie County? My wife's in real estate. She had four calls this morning, and the county is wanting to deny him the ability to do that, the ability to make a living, to use his land for what he paid for it for and what he wants to use it for. That's pretty much it. If I may present him, he's got a couple photographs that are show you, you know what to say about the picture. I don't know if you're allowed that or not, but anyways, just kind of a picture of the location.
Next is Tim Cranfield. Mr. Cranfield, if you'll come up.
My name's Timothy Cranfield. I did buy the property in October of 2020. When I bought the property, there was four lots on the property existing. We went to, I had Robert Stone go forward to zoning office and ask him to approve the four plots. We thought we had five. They told us that there was four on the plots, there was four on the tax card. We've been charged taxes on the top, on the property at $4,500 per mobile home for existing years, as far back as we can go back, the mobile homes have been there since '76 or '78. All I'm trying to do is take the ones that are on there off, put these four back. They're under the grandfather clause, it's on an acre and a half track. We have already bought the mobile homes. I have three that I have permits for. We were in touch with the zoning board all along, told them what we were intended to do, they had no problem with it. They said that since it was on the tax card, then that would be all we would get, and so I thought there was five. So, in June, I go to apply for the four permits, and that's when I got told that I would get three of the four, but not four of the four. And I was kind of confused as to what was the reasoning for it, and they said that sometime someone had deemed one of them unlivable, and therefore it was not under the grandfather clause that I could have my fourth lot. Well, nobody told the previous owner, and she's been paying taxes on it for all these years, and I told her, I paid taxes on it at the closing cost, so I don't see how that's possible. I don't want nothing from nobody but what I paid for. And I've been doing this for 21 years now, and I do what I say, we've made it look completely nice down there, and I just, you know, I just want what I got, what I paid for. And so, you know, coming forward, we have asked Mr. Meadwell three times now for the name of who and when this person deemed this property this way, and he has yet to give us any explanation as to who or when. And without that, I don't see this stands. So, I'm not going against anything that I think is wrong, but I've spent a lot of money down there, and I feel like I need to get what I deserve. Thank you for your time.
Next individual we got is a Bonnie, and I apologize, but I cannot read your last name, it's on a solar moratorium. You've signed up for public comment. If you'd rather go now, you can, or if you want to wait until the solar moratorium comes up. I'm sorry, do what? I mean, it's your choice.
It'll be your call.
I apologize. Looks like an E or a G, but I'm not sure which.
It's no problem. I apologize for not knowing when I'm supposed to go. Good evening, I'm Dr. Bonnie Grigsby. I'm speaking on behalf of several people in the audience this evening. We'd like to thank you in advance for your vote to extend the solar moratorium. This wise decision reflects your understanding this is a complex issue and that we, as a county, are still very inexperienced, as just three of the eight approved solar facilities are more than 18 months old. Your extension provides time to address the financial liability of the landowners and the county. A large part of the liability is associated with decommissioning of these facilities at the end of life. As we all now have come to recognize, our previous ordinance made it much too easy for solar companies to dance around the financial assurances that there were required. The ownership of these facilities can be tracked by following the limited liability companies attached to them. Unfortunately, two of our eight have dissolved, and six have changed primary ownership multiple times, one as many as five times. This legal maneuvering makes it very hard to know who is responsible, potentially leaving the landowner and the county vulnerable and liable. Another issue that had not been previously well addressed is size and location. The larger these developments become, the greater the liability financially and the greater the volume of waste. Several national energy organizations, including our own Duke Energy, place that liability at half a million dollars for every 50 acres. Mr. Meadwell, the Planning Department, and the Planning Board, that you tasked with processing, the process of revising the ordinance and updating the comprehensive plan, have done a mammoth task with hours of research and dedication in addressing these issues, and we would like to publicly thank them. In conclusion, thank you for another six-month moratorium protecting the land, the finances, and the people of this great county. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Chair, that's the last of three who signed up.
Okay. Next, we'll move to presentations. The first one, I'll call Ms. Robin West for the fiscal year 2021 audit presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, we have Tanya Thompson from Martin Starnes and Associates, who we engaged to do our audit for fiscal year 2021. She'll do a presentation on their, a summary of their findings.
Good evening and Happy New Year. As Robin said, my name is Tanya Thompson. I'm an audit manager with Martin Starnes and Associates. This is my first year being the audit manager for your county. However, we have several years of good history with Davie County, and I want to take the, just a moment to thank you for our continued relationship. Also, I want to remind you that this is information for your fiscal year ending June 30, 2021. We are halfway into fiscal year 22 now, but just let's look back and see how last year ended. Some highlights before we get into the meat of it, I always say that the most important thing that I need to tell you tonight is our opinion, and that's what you hire us for, and our opinion is unmodified, which is the best, what's considered a clean opinion, that there were no issues with your audit. I do want to thank Robin and Cindy and everyone else at the county for their cooperation and our ability to complete the audit in a timely and satisfactory manner. And if we were to find material weaknesses during the course of our audit, is kind of a byproduct of our audit, we would be obligated to report those to you. However, we did not find any material weaknesses that were reported as part of the audit. So, just a high-level overview of your general fund. If we look at 2021 compared to the prior year, the red column are your revenues. So, last year, we had 60.4 million in revenues and 60 point, just under two, of expenditures. And if we compare that to 2021, we had 64.3 million in revenues and 63.2 in expenditures, so kind of growth at the same rate there, or very similar. And I'm sure you know, 2021 was kind of an unusual year, as was 2020 with the pandemic, and there was some additional funding and things like that that played into those increased revenues and expenses. So, fund balance is one of the most important things that we look at to determine the financial health of a local government, and that's generally just your assets less your liabilities, it's what's left over that you can carry over into the next fiscal year. So, you can see a four-year trend here of your fund balance. This is total fund balance in the general fund. From 2020 to 2021, it did decrease about 687,000. So, when we talk about fund balance, if you look at your balance sheet for your governmental funds, you'll see that there are various classifications. The previous slide dealt with total fund balance, but it's actually broken down into a lot of different pieces. You have things that are non-spendable, like inventory. Restricted means that typically you've got revenues or assets that have some restriction on how they can be used. Committed is an internal restraint, so the board has decided this is how we're going to use that money. Assigned is kind of the same thing, but at an even lower level of restraint. And then unassigned means this is just the money that the county has that could be used for any purpose. So, the way that the LGC looks at fund balance for a unit and comparatively across the state between units is a concept called available fund balance. Now, this is a statutory calculation. If you take your total fund balance, you take out those non-spendable things, because you can't spend them, you take out the stabilization by state statute, which is a calculation by state law that says you can't spend this in the next year because you didn't have it, it's mostly made up of your receivables. Even though those receivables are recorded in your books, the revenue, related revenue was recorded, you can't actually spend it because you didn't have it in hand yet. And that, if we do that calculation, will come down to what is considered the available fund balance. So, for FY '21, we'll take that total fund balance, less the non-spendable, less the stabilization by state statute, and your available fund balance to, that's available to carry over into fiscal year '22, is 11,444,000. If we compare that to the, I'm sorry, I think that should say 2020, if we compare that to the previous year, it was 12.4 million. So, it did decrease, and I can tell you that the components of that decrease is a combination of your non-spendable went down, you did have some other factors in there this year, it's very low, and your stabilization by state statute went up this year, because your receivables were higher. So, another way that we look at fund balance, available fund balance, is as a percentage of your expenditures. And the way that the LGC looks at expenditures, it's actually, if you just take your expenditures, you have to add in your transfers out, that's money that you take out of your general fund and you use it for capital projects or funding other endeavors that are outside of the general fund, and you back out your debt proceeds, that's the number that we're analyzing when we say net expenditures. So, if you take that fund balance available and your net expenditures, you get your fund balance percentage. And you can see from 19 to 20 to 21, it went from 24.8 to 20.2 to 17.6. Now, I'm sure everyone has heard the LGC minimum of 8% fund balance, that is one month's worth of expenditures that you have on hand. They have actually done away with that. They have a new guideline this year, and it depends on your size. Just want to make sure I'm telling you the right number. So, for your size, the LGC's minimum fund balance available that they would like you to have is 20%, so you're just under that 20%. The median for other governments with general fund expenditures, other counties with general fund expenditures below 100 million is 39%. Any questions on fund balance before we?
So, the median in our peer group at this point?
Yes.
Is that what you're telling me, is 39%?
39% in other counties with less than 100 million of budgeted general fund expenditures. And the target that the LGC would like for that peer group to have is 20. So, just a real quick look at your general fund revenues, the top three revenues that you have. 76% of your taxes are made up of ad valorem taxes, and you can see those increased from 47.3 million to 50 million. Some of that was in your ad valorem taxes, but most of it was actually in your local option sales tax. Across the state, there was a large increase in the local option sales tax as people received and used stimulus, as they stayed home in their home counties instead of traveling as part of the pandemic. The intergovernmental revenues, the red columns, increased about 1.1 million, and most of that is from your federal and state grants. Most of those grants are going to be health and social services related, but there were some other grants in there as well. And then your charges for services are fairly consistent at just under 4 million each year, and those are going to consist of mostly fees for services for EMS and health and things like that. So, your top categories where your money went in your general fund are going to be public safety, education, and human services. So, you can see a pretty big spike there in public safety expenditures. Most of those were in operating expenses for your jail, I'm sorry, for your sheriff's department and your fire departments. There was also some additional capital outlay for your EMS department that factored in there to that increase of about 2.5 million. Now, your education and your human services were pretty comparable year to year, so no major increases or decreases there. Your enterprise funds, your water and sewer fund, and then your solid waste fund, had operating revenues of, well, the water and sewer had operating revenues of 7 million, your solid waste fund of just under 200,000, operating expenses of just under 7 million for your water and sewer fund, and 508,000 for the solid waste fund, and then your revenues over/under expenditures. The water and sewer fund is, revenues are covering its expenditures at 136,000 in the positive. The solid waste fund had negative revenues under expenditures of 313,000 or so, and that difference is covered with transfers in from other departments. So, one thing that's, that we look at with enterprise funds are your cash flows. You want to make sure that your cash flows are positive and that they're enough to cover your debt service and capital requirements. So, if we look at the water and sewer fund, the current year compared to the prior year, those cash flows from operations are positive at just around 2 million. Your unrestricted net position in that water and sewer fund was 14.5 million in the current year versus 12.6 in the prior year. That's not exactly the same, but it's kind of similar to that fund balance in the general fund. It's a way to measure how much you have available in those funds. That's all of my numbers that we're going to talk about this evening. However, I do have just a few more things to talk about. So, again, new this year with the LGC, they've had a lot of changes this year. They have come up with this idea of performance indicators, and any of the performance indicators that pop on their analysis, the auditors are now required to report to the board. If any of those, like these listed, come up, then the auditor must present it to the board, and then the board has 60 days from today's date to provide a written response to the LGC, which should be signed by the majority of the board members, the county manager, and the finance director. So, those, the three performance indicators that you had that you'll, you should draft a letter and respond to the LGC based on, are the fund balance available percentage, like we talked about, was just under that 20% target for the, what the LGC considers to be the target for counties of your size. The county was added to the unit assistance list, and therefore the LGC would just like an update to say, whatever reason you were added to the unit assistance list, to address that and say, well, this is what we've done to this date to address that issue. Also, there were some budget violations. These were not material enough to be considered a material weakness, however, they do have to be reported in the footnotes of your financial statements. So, you'll see that statutory budget violations reported in the footnotes, and that should be addressed in the letter as well. So, you had some other performance indicators based on the LGC's analysis that were, that do not require any kind of response. I would consider them more positive performance indicators. The audit was submitted on time. The water and sewer fund quick ratio is one of the things that the LGC looks at very closely. They do want a quick ratio of at least one, meaning your assets are at least as much to cover, your current assets are at least as much to cover your current liabilities, and that quick ratio for the water and sewer fund is currently 8.6. And you also have a stable property tax valuation and collection percentage. That is the end of my presentation. However, I'm happy to take any additional questions, if you have any.
Does anyone have any questions?
Robin, have you got any responses to some of the statements that were made, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, absolutely. I'm going to talk a little bit more about fund balance. The fund balance percentage that was shown a few slides ago, the decrease from fiscal year 20 to 21 of 20.17% to 17.58%. A large part of that is due to just the increase in expenditures, total expenditures, so the denominator of that equation, when that increases, even if everything else remains the same, your fund balance percentage is going to go down. So, that was a factor in the decrease in fund balance. Also, you know, we reported that revenues have exceeded expenditures, which is a bit confusing then when you say fund balance decrease, but I think that Tanya did a good job of explaining that there are other factors that go into that as well, some things that are below the line, like contributions to other funds, especially contributions to capital projects for our capital improvement plan, as well as debt proceeds and proceeds from the sale of capital assets. And usually for amendments, we have, the usage of fund balance is generally made for one-time allocations or things that are allocated from prior years but not spent in prior years. Some of those things are not avoidable, like things that are specific for specific revenue purposes, but some things could be avoidable, so we can, you know, look at that to see if we can avoid any of those uses of fund balance. Some things to remind you about is, we have a plan for the future. If you recall, around the time that we adopted the budget for the current fiscal year of '21, '22, we adopted a fund balance restoration plan, and that plan included that we're going to, in the future, recommend conservative estimates for revenues as well as appropriations. And in the current fiscal year, we have appropriated fund balance amount that's 1.2 million dollars less than the previous fiscal year, a fiscal year 2020, 2021. Is that right? Yes. Also, we said we were going to present budget amendments throughout the year as we look at revenues. If our estimates are low, then we could amend those revenues to increase those, but not have an offsetting appropriation of expenditures, so that can help us. So, one example of that would be, in the American Rescue Plan, we have that revenue replacement amount. So, if we want to hold off on allocating any of those dollars, then that can help us increase our fund balance. You know, that's an example of one, of a few that happen.
Robin?
Yes.
And what, what, what is the approximate amount that you're looking at in terms of the?
In terms of revenue replacement?
Yes.
I think that we estimated, this is off the top of my head, Cindy, is about a million dollars, which we had taken a bit out of that for some other allocations, but we have about, I want to say 700,000 of that yet left, yet to, you know, that we don't want to allocate. And after December 31st, once we finalize those numbers, we can do another revenue replacement calculation for the calendar year and see if there's any other of those dollars that we can, again, apply for under the American Rescue Plan. So, stay tuned on that one. Hopefully, we'll get those numbers pretty quickly. So, does anybody have questions about fund balance before I move on?
Our current restoration plan gets us back above the threshold. How long does that take, Robin?
Well, it's, I've calculated the amounts to get back, and it's kind of some big chunks. So, to get up to the, from the 17.58% that we're at as of June 30, 2021, to 20% that Tanya was talking about, the new threshold, that's going to take about 2 million dollars. So, you know, that's one amount. To get up to 25, it might take us more than another year to do that. That's more around, you know, I'm talking round numbers here, about 5 million dollars. So, we have some work to do, but we have a plan in place to do that, so.
And when you guys called this afternoon, and we had, you kind of educated us on what was coming tonight, my main concern throughout this process and some, the last couple of years, is how it's going to affect our bond rating.
Right.
And so, you know, as we, as we move forward, you know, we may need some, I think, public explanation here at our meetings, wherever it might be, of, you know, because this is not the only factor that affects our bond rating. not the only factor that affects our bond rating. There's a couple of other factors with, with the jail coming up, the detention center coming up, that we've already seen that we may have to address and may go outside of what we have approved as standards before. So, you know, that's one thing that, you know, kind of, I really personally need a comfort level with how this is going to affect our bond rating as we move forward before we address any, any other major expenditures that might affect the, the fund, the fund balance and these other characteristics that are, that we've talked about.
Right, exactly. And, you know, as you said, that's not, fund balance percentage, you know, the way that is presented here is a North Carolina thing. So bond rating agencies kind of analyze fund balance as a percentage of other things, like a fund balance is a percentage of revenues, that kind of thing. So, you know, that's not necessarily the way that, that bond rating agencies look at it. But if there's a decrease, then, you know, I think that as long as we have a good story to tell of why there's usage of, you know, here we are taking care of some needs that, you know, that are needed, then that also goes along with just the number. So, you know, sometimes it's interesting to look at data and numbers, but sometimes a story to go along with it is also very helpful.
Anybody else have any questions? Or input?
I can go on about the other two items, the unit, the unit assistance list. We got a letter from the LGC at the time, last spring, I think it was in April that they can, can compile their list. As you recall, last year, our audit was late. So at the time that they made the list, we hadn't submitted our audit, but we did so soon after. So I think at the point in time, whenever they're done, you know, doing their review process there at the LGC, I feel sure we'll drop off the list because that was the only reason given in the letter that we received. And lastly, the budget, the budget overage violation was for the advance fire department fund. That's kind of a new fund in our office. Those tax funds, usually we just collect the taxes, pay the taxes out. So that's what we did to pay the taxes out to the fire department. We paid advance appropriately, you know. We just didn't go back through and make sure that we amended the budget when we did that. So that's what that was about, so.
Any questions?
As we continue to develop this fund balance restoration policy, you going to continue to be working with Davenport on that?
Yes, mhm.
I think Mr. Jones's point, I mean, I think some updates on that would be helpful as we move along.
Absolutely, yes.
Anybody else got anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, we do ask if the board would officially accept the audit report.
Seeing no more questions, I'll accept a motion to accept the information as presented.
I'm moved.
I have a second. All in favor, call for the vote. Five votes. Thank you. Thanks for all your work. All right, next we'll move to our interlocal agreement with Davie County Public Schools. I'll call on Mr. Bone and Ms. West.
Do you want to take that down?
Yes. Are you just warming it up?
Yeah.
Okay.
So commissioners, the interlocal agreement between the county and Davie County schools expires at the end of this, this fiscal year, so it's time to renew that. With that renewal, discussion has revolved around the topic of teacher supplements. Increasing the amount of teacher supplements could, could certainly help attract and retain teachers for Davie County schools. This is something that Superintendent Jeff Wallace has talked with this board about on numerous occasions. So after reviewing our options, our discussion has been focused on trying to provide sufficient funding to increase local supplements from 5.5% to 8%. Roughly $515,000 in recurring revenue is needed to fund that increase. As you recall, the interlocal agreement is based on actual audited numbers, so next year's budget is based on last year's audit. So for example, the revenue for Davie County schools in Davie County's 2022, '23 budget would be based on the audit from 2020, 2021. We've talked about having a term of this new interlocal agreement to be for five years. That way, we can align the interlocal agreement with the four-year revaluation cycle. Therefore, we, we suggest with the, the interlocal agreement before you tonight to, to have the, the five-year term, and then thereafter, four years to stay aligned with the tax revaluation tax schedule. So the interlocal agreement before you tonight includes a one-time additional allocation of $515,000 for Davie County schools for fiscal year '22, '23 in order to increase the amount of supplements. And then to maintain this level of funding for teacher supplements for the duration of the agreement, we would maintain the same percentage, 41.3% for the current expense calculation. The increase in tax values from revaluation and growth in new development should maintain sufficient funding for the increase in teacher supplements moving forward. So tonight, we ask you to consider adoption of the interlocal agreement. Robin and I are here to answer any questions that you may have. Additionally, we have several officials from Davie County schools with us tonight, Superintendent Jeff Wallace and Clay Harris, Finance Director, as Willis Clint Jocke, the Chairman of the Board of Education. Do you have any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
The only question I have, and it may not be a question that you can answer right now, is I know we had talked about different counties handle supplements different ways, okay? And this may be something Clay or Mr. Wallace can, can address. How will the supplement, will the supplement, this increased supplement be implemented in the same way it was prior, or will, or would they be a new range of how we address the supplement based on number of years employed, teacher education, those kind of things?
The county manager's parting words were, you wouldn't be put on the spot tonight. I'm messing with Dave. Yeah, we knew there might be some questions. Mr. Jones, fair question. You had mentioned that in times past. At this point, it would, it would not be staged. We have looked at that. We're currently looking at salary studies for our classified staff. There's some other areas that we hope to move toward. We actually have, one of the examples we look at is Forsyth County, and Carrie Crutchfield primarily built their plan. He is doing our, our current classified salary study. So we would then talk with him about the potential of a graduated look. We are interested in going there. One of the things that folks may not be aware of, but once, in, in the current state salary schedule, if you, once you get to year '24, correct Clay? 15 to '24? 15 to '24, there's no increase in the state salary. Once you get to your number of 15 years, now unless there's budgetary increases year over year, but there's no step increase. So that's the target area we'd like to look at. And then include folks with master's degree and doctorates and those kind of things. So we're definitely interested, and we hope to get there. We just have to see, make sure we can sustain that, is what we're, what we hope to do. Yes, I hope that answers the question.
Well, it does.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Wallace, because current, refresh my memory. I know at one time, though, if you had a master's, that it did give you, but now that's gone away, correct?
That's correct. And I will tell you that each year, three or four times, or three times for sure, superintendents across the state get together, and we meet with the, the state CFO, Alexis Schaus, and, and some of those folks, and we continue to talk about that. That picked a little, up a little bit of traction this past year, and we do hope to see that reinstated, the master's pay on top of that. Now, of course, there is the opportunity for the national boards that we have, Davie County is well represented, and that's an additional 12%. But again, that's funded through the state.
Okay.
So, but we are, but you are correct. The state used to fund additional pay for master's pay, but they no longer, have not done that in the probably four or five years, five, I think.
At least, yeah.
I think that's about right, yes.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Mr. Wallace?
It's just a curiosity question, but the, as far as the state looking at some of these perhaps antiquated pay scales for, or the way they do this for the teachers, are they, is there any traction with the state looking at that? The example you gave, the 15 to the 24, there's no increase.
And, and to that point too, I will throw one more piece in there. The range, when you, when you go look at someone, particularly in classified, the range is so broad, and it's just huge, along with the multiple steps that's, that's there. Again, we've continued to talk with them about that. I can't stand here and say, Mr. Renninger, that I think there's true traction. I can tell you that pay is obviously salary for both classified and, and certified or key item. Now, Clay, I don't know if you're aware of any other traction or them addressing any type of the salary scales?
The certified piece is the only thing that's set at stone by step. Our classifieds are men's and maxes, so we've got to pay them within a minimum and a maximum. So when we talk about steps, that's just on our certified side. And so we've got the ability to, part of your question, which supplements are just for certified, but we can set our steps for classified individuals where they need to be inside of that. And so that's one of the things that we're looking at. But from certified, that is a state-driven from that standpoint.
And, and again, to your point, Mr. Renninger, we talk about how disappointing that gap is when you get to 15 years and then you don't, you truly don't move a step or pay for 15, for nine years. And that is by no means attractive to anyone. And when you're here 15 years, that is, again, some of our best people that we need to find ways to try to do. And we do try to find other things. That's who we target for summer work and tutoring and different things, but that's a year-over-year thing that we try to make sure that we do reach out to those folks.
And the, the other thing, and you were here a month ago or so, that we talked about, and you have this, I know you've guys feel the same way I do about this, and I've talked to Julia and Joyce about this, and this may not be the correct term, but what I call it is lateral entry, where we, we're, we're, we're so honed in on teacher certification that there may be, even if it's 10% of the populate, the, the possible teaching population out there that might come out of the private sector as retirees or whatever they are, as engineers, as scientists, that might want to teach in the public schools, we, we have got to do something about that in the state of North Carolina. It may not be a great number of folks, but there are people we're missing. And so I know you guys are addressing that.
And that one, that one does have some traction, and there were some changes a year or two ago that did allow a little bit more latitude. And, but what we do see, the data has shown us that a lot of times lateral entry, as you, you've already touched on it, usually we get a, some of our rock stars right out of, out of, out of the chute, and then most of them are not. I don't mean that disrespectfully, it's just teaching is, is much more difficult or harder than a lot of them think that it is when they come in. It's not just flipping the book open and let's go anymore. So the, the data doesn't show that lateral entry are, the largest percentage of those do not return after three years, but there are some quality people. But it doesn't negate your point. I agree 100%.
Well, and my whole point is, I think we were talking in the context of when you were here before, that it's more difficult
Correct.
to get to our folks. And so anything we can do to flex up to allow
Absolutely.
good people, good people.
I agree. We agree with that. Yes, sir.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Wallace.
Thank you. And I want to say, I can't, you know, I've said this 100 times, I'm going to say it 101. The relationship that we have with, between our Board of Commissioners and our Board of Ed is phenomenal. And I want you to know, and I've shared this, we, I go to the larger meetings, Board, Board of, statewide, regional Board of Education meetings, and you've got this one superintendent sitting over here with half of her board here and the other half over here. I said, what are you doing? She said, they don't get along. That's among their own Board of Education. And then we get asked all the time, how do you do this? With your Board of Ed and your Board of Commissioners? It's phenomenal. It doesn't just happen. So we appreciate all of you, and we're really thankful to work with these two behind us. I'm appreciating our leadership, but the opportunity to work with you is, has been, and that's what makes us, we're a big piece of what makes us important, you know that, so the county important. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion to accept the interlocal agreement as proposed. Got a motion on the table, got a second. Any other discussion? All in favor? Five votes. Thank you. Next, we'll move to a zoning text amendment for solar facilities presentation. I'll ask for Mr. Meadwell to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to give the board an update on where planning staff and the planning board is with the current. I'm sorry about this. Here we go. With the proposed amendments to the solar generating facility ordinance, the planning board did meet in December of this, of last year, and did recommend some language to you for consideration. But the overall feel from the planning board is that they did not see a real need for any further solar development in the county. That with the current sites that we have towing more than 600 acres of land, 75% which have had a ownership turnover is, is a real concern. Where these sites are leased, they change ownership, change ownership, and the ability to track those and to keep up with is a real concern with the board. That, that they have really, that they feel that the county has concluded that they have reached their max in terms of land use. Now, as I said, they did recommend some language, but I think the feel of the board is that it's, you know, if, if a project comes in, it has to be that perfect piece of property. So what I'd like to do is just kind of go through some of the highlights of the requirements. The, the language or the district that it's located in does not change. It still stays in that special purpose district. It would still require that land to be petitioned to be rezoned, which currently is the normal process that we go through now. We've, we've kind of changed the process for that. As you can see, we, it's more of a seven-step type process where you have to do a pre-application meeting with staff. You have a community meeting that's held by the applicant, which currently, we do do that now prior to planning board. The planning board meets, receives this comment, but instead of making that decision at that meeting, it's, we're going to require that their, this, this decision be held over for an additional meeting, to be able to take that information from that first public comment meeting to digest that. After that, a decision by the planning board, there's a second community meeting that's held before it comes before you, before you call for a public hearing. We've seen that that was a deficiency, that things changed from the planning board, from when that first community meeting's happened till it gets to the planning board, till it gets you, things changed. The application changes. So we really need, or seeing that there was a need to have this second community meeting, and then the request comes to you, and then we would ask that you wouldn't take, make a decision that, that night or that day that you had the hearing, that you would hold this over to a second meeting. And the reason for this, it's so much information to be able to process, right? These, these are complicated proposals now, as you've seen with our last proposal or request that we had affected numerous property owners, numerous citizens, and so from the planning board's stance and from staff, we've seen that this process allows and gives the respective boards enough time, even the citizens enough time to actually respective boards enough time, even the citizens, enough time to actually process what's occurring and, and how to address these issues. Some changes that are proposed, we went, still kept the minimum acreage amount of 25 acres, but a maximum site of 100 acres of panel area. We've increased that equipment setback from 100 feet to 250 feet. The amount of buffering and plannings has increased from a single row to almost, you know, three rows of plannings. If the board recalls, you know, that is one of the things that this, this visual presence that you have of these facilities was always an issue or that is continually brought up to the board. You know, the other issue was the buffers were requiring that these have to be maintained and certified annually. So that leaseholder will have to go out and provide to staff that, hey, your plannings are there. No exterior lighting, you know, before we would allow some lighting to occur on-site, and doing our research and we found there's really no need for exterior lighting for this. And one thing that is becoming more prominent in these type facilities, these, you know, utility-type grade, is battery storage. And that is one thing that we did not address or have addressed in our current regulations, but those have to be separate, back 300 feet from any property line to a feature, to adjacent residence. Also, part of the requirements that will be required is a Phase 1 environmental assessment as well as an environmental impact analysis. It has to be part of the rezoning application, as well as an erosion control permit. You know, these are the things that, you know, erosion control, that was one of the things that we continually heard from citizens when, you know, when they come in, they place the panels, they get the site ready for installation, you know, getting that erosion control permit. Now, that's required before the issuance of a development permit from our office. However, we're wanting to see that upfront. We need to see that, what impact that may have, and with the environmental assessment and the environmental impact analysis, that goes a long way to showing you or giving you the information to make a decision on how this facility, what it looked like before, and what it's going to look like after the panels are installed. Visual simulations to be provided. You know, if the board recalls, the Perrin Dell project there off of the Putnam Ridge, they did a visual analysis. I thought that was very beneficial in showing how the visual impact would be for a solar facility. We've included that or made that a requirement. We asked them to do that, but we found that the benefit to that was so great that we make that as a requirement. But also is, you know, with the battery storage and things like that, that a emergency access plan be approved by our, you know, our emergency personnel or fire marshal's office, you know, these are utility-grade type energy generating facilities. You know, you do have the potential, so we want to just make sure that we are safe, that our citizens are safe. Also, approval from the North Carolina Utilities Commission for the certificate of convenience or need, you know, for these type facilities, they have to be approved by the state, they have to get a state permit from the Utilities Commission. What we found is, is that sometimes we're approving these projects, however, they don't have approval from the state yet. They don't even know that they're going to be approved by the state. So having this information upfront knows, you know, satisfies the need that we have to know, hey, you're going to have a viable project. We're just not going to go rezone property from a residential or an agricultural zoning district to a special purpose district, and then you not get your Utilities Commission approval. So that, you know, you know, that the owner or the leasing provide documentation of compliance every two years, you know, that means, I think that was another issue that was continually brought up, you know, who's going out and verify these things? Who's going to check these things? We're hoping that this covers that. But, you know, the other thing, too, is that these leases keep on changing. We're not aware of these, but, so it's going to be the property owner. It's going to be responsible for that, to let the county know that these leases, they are the ones that are signing these leases. They're the ones going into these agreements. They have to let the county know when these happen. You know, with battery storage, as I mentioned earlier, you know, that chemical that is in it, we need to know what that is and what those materials are. But probably one of the biggest things in this is that board members should go to these sites. I think that was one of the things that Commissioner Poindexter really wanted, and I think even you, Mr. Jones, wanted that. We're asking that not our planning board members, but you, go visit these sites. Go visit and see what is happening on the ground there. So probably one of the biggest changes, and this is probably the, the item that has probably brought up at every meeting. And I know, Mr. Jones, you bring this up anytime when these projects comes up, was, you know, the decommissioning cost. And unfortunately, what we have found with even our facilities that we have approved, the six that we have on the ground, we don't know, right? So none of these projects have ever come to end life. Many projects across the country have not come to end life. So, you know, this idea of what the, what is the accurate cost to do that is, is difficult. But what we did, we use Duke Power and what they would charge for decommissioning. So we've changed that from, you know, what we typically had was engineer's estimate minus the scrap material costs that they would get from the material. We've removed that, and we've changed that, that it needs to be the greater amount of either $100,000 per megawatt or 150% cost estimate of the decommissioning. We're not going to depend on the solar folks, engineers. We hire that person, they compensate us for that. So, so that we have, you know, an accurate amount to fix these or correct these in the future, 25, 30 years from now, when these things are in the life. So I think that that was probably one of the, the biggest issues that the board had was this decommission and just the unknowns there. One of the other issues that was brought to the board was the comprehensive plan did not address utility-grade solar facilities. We've put language in the comprehensive plan, so to address that. So we're hoping that, that this is a start, but as a, as I said, the planning board was, although, and I appreciate Dr. Grisby and her compliments, but I still feel, and the planning board still feels, that there's, it's a good start, it's a good draft, but there probably needs to be more work done. The concerns that we have with addressing what our current residents and our future residents, it's too big of an, important of an issue for us to probably do anything with this now. And I think later on in your agenda, you have something to address that, but it's just the unknowns are there, and I don't know that we'll ever know what the, the full-known answer is, but we're getting close to that. We don't want to be like some of our neighboring counties who have adopted as a quick fix and then have had to stop, put on the brakes, and redo ordinances again to address the issues that have come up. So I'll be more than glad to answer any of the questions that you may have, but as I said, you know, the planning board has worked very diligently on this and taken this very seriously, have done, you know, more research than I would have ever expected them to do. So I'm very proud of them. You know, the, they broke into a little subgroup, and that subgroup really carried the ball for us in getting this information, so, but I'll be more than glad to answer any questions that the board has on this, if any.
I don't have any questions. I just really appreciate, obviously, the level of work you guys have done, done on this. You know, again, we are the second smallest landmass county in the state. Land is finite, and so what you guys have done so far, I really appreciate, and I just want to let you know that.
Andrew, I did have one question, if you don't mind. I noticed a while ago you said that 75% change hands. Is that properties, or you may have answered it already, is that just the lease and the equipment?
The leases, the leases.
Has, do any of the properties change hands as well?
I've only known of one instance where the property actually changed hand, and that was when Duke Power actually purchased the facility, which I don't think they do that anymore. I think they stopped that in 2017 or 18, if I'm not mistaken.
Okay. Go ahead. Sorry. Appreciate all the work. The enhanced decommissioning cost, which, or quantification, I appreciate that, and I think that's great, but is, are you still trying to collect from that via a letter of credit?
Yeah, there are multiple ways to do that, letter of credit, bond, things. Now, we're, we're kind of limited into ways we can do that with state statute. So we have to follow those guidelines for how we get that.
Well, I just want to say, even though, I know that it's concerned about the changing of hands, and all, in this day and time, that is in everything. There is no business that is not safe from being purchased from someone else. It happens every day. So I don't, I don't know that we can penalize landowners because that's a possibility.
Yep.
I just don't think that's fair for us to do that. When some of the people that we have heard from in the past and probably in the future, they want to develop a solar farm as a way to keep their land because they don't really want to sell it. They don't want it to leave their family, but there's no one interested in continuing whatever's happening there before, so, but we just need to take that into consideration. I don't know that that needs to be a strong point in our decision-making, is that it possibly could change hands, because that's with every business and everything that we approve.
Right. And to your point, Ms. Van, the board discussed that.
Right.
You know, we don't know who moves into, into commercial building, right?
Yeah.
But with the responsibility or the, the future responsibility of a decommissioning and the ability for that to go defunct, I think that's where the board was really concerned right now.
Right. Well, and I'm hoping that because the people, some of the people that want to, to establish these solar farms is to keep their property in their family, that they're going to be responsible for making sure that happens, too, because hopefully the family's going to want that to hap, to occur properly.
Mr. Chairman, can I say one other thing? Anita, you, you bring up a tremendous point. And one of the things I would love for us to look at, and Andrew, this has absolutely nothing to do with you, but Anita brought the point up, is allowing landowners, especially when they get to, and I, this is my term, because I'm getting closer to an end of life, to be able to keep their, to be able to keep their property, is to find some way within the statutes to address, and gosh, guys, don't have a heart attack here, phasing down property taxes to folks that have held on to their land for years and years and years and years. Also, we can look at the issue of age. When folks get to be 65 years or older and they've held on to, and again, I, these are just ideas right now, and Andrew is being very patient with me, but he knows this as it, but is when they get to those ages, begin to look at the possibility of phasing down their property taxes so that they're not forced into this position. I, I really think these are things we should look at. It's not something we can overnight accommodate, but, you know, gosh, when somebody's owned a piece of property for 50 years, they've paid property taxes, they're 65 years old or older, maybe older, I think there's just some creative ways we need to look at within the legislature and what the legislature will allow us to do to maybe help folks hold on to their land other than signing leases over necessarily for solar farms. But that's another question to answer at another time, but thank you for bringing that up, Anita. I think, I think it's something we need to look at.
The only thing I would be apprehensive about that, though, is we've already proven that our population, our elderly population is our fastest growing, so that's going to hurt our tax base a lot if we do a lot of that, so.
Mr. Chairman, if I may add to that, I got the shock this morning when I went downstairs and paid my taxes. That was two months of Social Security. I wonder how many people out there are in the same boat or worse. So that is something we definitely need to take a look at.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions, Mr. Meadwell? Thank you again for all your work. Next, we're going to move on to our public hearings. First is our Recreation, Parks and Ordinances update. I'll call on Ms. Amanda Aker.
So tonight in the agenda packet, we do have three amendments to our Recreation and Parks Code ordinances. Those three were going to be the 20, the 95.053. This one talks more about our branding and the change have been made so that our department branding guides proper uses of our name and logo for our department. That's kind of the reason for that change. The 95.061, this was put in place to specifically identify the park facilities and structures. This could be useful for the law enforcement or insurance for the property and risk management. We just kind of specified exactly what each of our facility, park facilities are in there. And then the last change was made to the 95.065, and that was more for the safety and the welfare of our park patrons in the area of the parking lots. These amendments have previously been reviewed by our staff, county attorney, county manager, and as well as our GCRP advisory board, that was all agreed upon on November 8th of last year. These have also been, per the amendments and statute, they were advertised in the Davie Enterprise on the 22nd and the 29th publications. And then we have copies available at the park for anybody that was interested in reviewing those for the public. So if you guys have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer any of those, all those changes.
Anybody have any questions from the second? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
All right. This is a public hearing. I'm just going to call Mr. Vogler.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The chair has announced this is the date now of a public hearing on proposed modifications chapter 95 entitled Recreation in Parks of the Davie County Code of Ordinances. There has been due notice given pursuant to the requirements of Article 20B of Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes and also the Davie County Code of Ordinances by way of due publication of notice of the public hearing and newspaper for general circulation in Davie County is required. The clerk to the board has attached an affidavit showing publication in said paper dated at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing to come forward to the podium, state your full name for the board, and then comment on proposal. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I would, and would, at this time, believe that there is no one that wishes to comment, and I would therefore turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair to close the public comments section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Okay. Thank you. Any more discussion? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
Second. All in favor? Five votes. Thank you. All right. Next, I'll call Mr. Meadwell again for the Solar Energy Moratorium Ordinance Extension.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Staff is requesting that the board hold a public hearing and adopt the attached ordinance resolution in your agenda package to extend the current solar generating moratorium for an additional six months. This extension would start February 3rd and extend to August 3rd to complete the work and fix this ordinance to the needs that I've identified, or that the planning board's identified, as well as for the board. So you will need to do a public hearing on that and adopt this ordinance resolution as part of that to extend that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Meadwell right now? Okay. This is a public hearing. Mr. Vogler, I'll turn it over to you. Okay, this is a public hearing, Mr. Vogler, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chair has announced this is the date now of the public hearing on proposed modifications, Chapter 155 of the North Carolina of the Davie County Code of Ordinance, to extend the moratorium for establishment and expansion of ground-mounted solar energy systems. There's been new, due notice given pursuant to requirements of Article 20B of Chapter 153A of the North Carolina General Statutes, and also the Davie County Code of Ordinance, by way of due publication of notice in the public hearing, and a newspaper of general circulation in Davie County is required by law. The clerk to the board has attached the affidavit showing the publication in said paper, and the dates being at least 10 days prior to today's date. I would ask all who wish to comment at this public hearing, come forward to the podium, state your full name, and then make your comments. Mr. Chair, seeing no one come forward, I will now turn the public hearing back over to you as board chair, to close the public comment section of this public hearing, provide the board the opportunity to discuss among yourselves what, if any, action you wish to take with regards to this matter.
Thank you, Mr. Vogler. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that this is a very good document that came before us. What I've been over, well, I've been over it a couple times and looked at it, and it still needs probably a little bit of refinement, and I would recommend, I would make the motion that we extend the moratorium for six more months, in order that that work can be done.
Okay. I have a motion, do I have a second on the table?
I'll second.
Mr. Jones, a second, to extend the moratorium. All in favor? Five votes, the moratorium's extended, thank you. Okay, next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Anybody have any questions, or do I have a motion to approve?
I make the motion to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Ms. Finney. All in favor? Five votes, thank you. All right, next, we'll move to old business. Any old business before us? No old business, seeing none, do we have any new business? No new business, I'll go to county manager to report, Mr. Bone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll keep it short tonight. We hope everyone had a blessed Christmas and wonderful New Year holiday. We look forward, as a staff, to great things in Davie County in 2022. Currently, we have 379 active COVID cases in Davie County, which is a 52% increase from last Monday. COVID-19 third doses and COVID boosters are available through Davie County Public Health. County facilities will be closed on Monday, January 17th, for the Martin Luther King Junior Holiday. A public meeting on the water supply improvement project will be held on January 24th at 6:00 PM, to discuss the needs, benefits, and impacts of the project. In an effort to practice social distancing guidelines related to the COVID-19 pandemic, we'll have a hybrid meeting that will be held in person at Cooleme Elementary School Media Center, 136 Marginal Street in Cooleme, and virtually livestream using Microsoft Teams Live. More information on this public meeting, and the link to access the public meeting can be viewed on the county website. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have at this time, please let me know if you have any questions.
Everybody have any questions for Dave?
Say, what time's that meeting on, 24?
6 o'clock.
Yeah. At Cooleme Elementary Library, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bone. Next, I'll move to commissioners' comments. Ladies first, Ms. Finney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also would like to say I hope everyone had a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I just, as always, I've got to give a big shout out to our first responders today. Over the holidays, our law, fire, rescue EMS have worked, and worked, and worked. There's been so much going on, we had a devastating house fire on Christmas Eve, multiple fire departments and law enforcement assisted them as well, I believe, with some traffic, and of course, the weather. Today, everybody was busy. All of our first responders paid and volunteer, from dispatch to people directing traffic, and people maintaining the chaos, as well as helping those that were hurt, and taking trees off power lines. It was endless, the things that were being done today. I believe there were at least 116 911 calls, and 149 CAD calls, just from midnight to noon today. So, that's a lot of calls for all of our first responders to take care of, and I just appreciate them so much. And, you know, I laid there last night, listening to the rain and the wind, knowing that volunteer people were out in that nasty mess, cutting trees down and clearing the roadways, and we need to be very thankful for them, and I just hope that this new year is wonderful for everyone. I think we're off to a good start. I encourage all of us here to just work to learn more about what we can do to make this county even better than it is, because we all agree that it's the best place to live. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Jones.
Just thank everyone for being here, it's always great to hear from our partners at the school system, all of our wonderful staff that are here, and all of our citizens that come out to let us hear what you have to say. We're, we're always here for that, we're always open to that, and I certainly concur with Ms. Finney, that it is you who makes this the greatest county in North Carolina live in, and we just thank you for your support and your prayers. And have, and, and I agree, Anita, we will, we will intensely pray that, that this will be a year of, of healing and release for all the citizens of Davie County, North Carolina, and this great country of ours. Thank you so much.
Commissioner Poindexter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for everybody who came out tonight, wish everybody a Happy New Year. I would instruct the county manager, if he could, please to look into Mr. Cranfield's issue, and see if there's anything that you can do for him. And, would like to say thanks to the water department, too, we forget those guys sometimes, and we do not want to do that. They are down in the muddy trenches, doing the filthy work, and we really do appreciate what they do, and everybody else as well, thank you.
Christian Renninger.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, appreciate everyone coming out. Again, it's always good to see a good number of people here, good to hear from you each month. I want to wish everyone a Happy New Year, looking forward to a good year in 2022, and got a lot of positive things going on, and we just need to continue to build on those, so, thanks for being here.
It's good to go last, because everybody brings everything up, so.
Happy New Year, I'm very proud to have the relationship we have with the school board, and what we're able to accomplish, in order to let the teachers know that we care, and they have the most precious asset in their hands, that's our children and our future. Thank you very much.
And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.